Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Hesse, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We thank you for this opportunity to gather here this evening to discuss issues key to our community, to listen to our citizens and their concerns and thoughts, and to conduct ourselves in a respectful and professional manner. Thank you for the dedicated service and commitment displayed by our city employees, especially during the recent inclement weather. And finally, please let spring and warmer weather come soon. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, February 18th City Council Meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Hello.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hesse.
Here.
Kena.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Kreider.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Thank you. At this time, Item 3, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, moving Items 7A and B directly after Item 4A. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items. We have Item A. We will recognize the February Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Katrina Williams of Planner Protective Services.
And I will ask Katrina Williams to come forward and Sunny Sanders, Director of the Department. All right. So congratulations to Katrina Williams, City of Jefferson Planner 2 for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization within the Department of Planning and Protective Services for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for February 2019. So I thought I would go through a few of the items that were listed on the nomination form, and I'll paraphrase in some cases. Ms. Williams began her work with the city in April 2016, bringing with her a wealth of knowledge on planning-related issues from her previous position with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission. Ms. Williams' duties include long-range transportation planning for the wider Jefferson City metropolitan area, which involves a high level of public engagement and coordination with the cities and counties within the Metropolitan Planning Organization area, which we often refer to as MPO, if I say that, that's what that means. Ms. Williams is also an expert in the field of GIS mapping and provides mapping services for the planning department, the transit system, and member communities with the MPO area. Ms. Williams operates a high level of professionalism and technical expertise. Ms. Williams makes the extra effort to ensure that rather complicated field of long-range planning and transportation is reproduced in a manner understandable by the general public. Ms. Williams is the epitome of dedicated and competent employee, accepting new challenges with enthusiasm, and inspires her colleagues in producing documents that are innovative and impeccable in quality. Ms. Williams has provided individual expertise and assistance to multiple city departments and has helped create numerous documents for the Central Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and has provided leadership for new employees. Ms. Williams routinely assists her coworkers with technical matters, including GIS mapping and public engagement. Ms. Williams provides excellent customer service on a consistent basis. Ms. Williams consistently performs her duties with a positive attitude and with genuine excitement for the field of planning and the future of the Jefferson City area. Ms. Williams has participated on numerous city committees, including the United Way Employee Committee. Ms. Williams' significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the City of Jefferson and the surrounding area are recognized and appreciated. So congratulations and thanks to Katrina Williams, City of Jefferson Planner 2, for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization within the Department of Planning and Protective Services for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for February 2019. Congratulations. Thank you. Got anybody here you want to introduce with you?
He won't like it.
Well, that's all right. Great. Well, welcome, and thank you for all of your service and everything that you do.
Thank you, Katrina. We're so very proud of you, and the word enthusiasm definitely describes you very well, and we do appreciate the enthusiastic approach that you take with the city and all the planning that goes into the -- all the wonderful things that a lot of times we get credit for, but the planning is really what makes it happen, and we appreciate that. And even things like the bike lanes, which we're very excited about, and the mayor's bike ride, and getting out there and riding and doing those things that we would not be able to do. I know you've been very, very hands-on on many, many of those projects personally, and we appreciate your effort. So on behalf of the City of Jefferson, we'd like to present you a city coin, so if you could come forward and we'll get a picture.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
We're happy to have Lauren here. Thank you.
Hi. It's so great to be invited back this evening and give you guys an update on Ripple and what we've been up to and our partnership with the City of Jefferson. And it's so great to see so many familiar faces. I told them this is going to be the easiest presentation I gave all year, so. Um, is this the right one? Is that it? There we go. So one of the first questions we always get at Ripple Glass is, why should I recycle our glass? So you can see from this screen, there are many benefits to recycling glass, and one of my favorites is that glass recycling is a closed-loop system, and the way that we recycle our glass, we do not create any additional waste or byproducts by doing that. And just a little bit about Ripple Glass. We were founded by Boulevard Brewing in 2009. Boulevard realized that they were producing millions of bottles each year and sending them to their local landfills, so they decided that they need to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So they were trying to figure out where glass bottles were going, and unfortunately, they were not going anywhere. Glass was not a recyclable commodity in Kansas City in 2009, and they were trying to figure out how they could fix that problem, and so their solution was to build a recycling plant, and that's exactly what they did. And what we make at our plant is from the recycled bottles, we make furnace-ready cullet, which we sell to Owens Corning, and they make fiberglass insulation. And then the other part of our product is sorted out from amber bottles, and it goes to Arda Group, where they make new beer bottles from it. The glass recycling was so successful in Kansas City that they expanded their reach after that. Many communities started to contact them and ask them how they can get their glass to Ripple. And the biggest barrier that everybody found was that glass is heavy and it's very expensive to ship. So glass, basically, in all of our communities that we get from is bulked, bunkered, and then transported via semi-trailers that are in dumps. So that's how we get all of that glass, and our regional program has become so successful that it contributes to over 50% of the glass that we get into our plant every year, and we are now in over 100 communities in over nine different states. Most of our communities, they do drop off glass, and the industry is really starting to notice the differences between materials when it's sorted out separately from single-stream items. Not all glass is the same, and you can see from this picture, the recovery rates of glass is also extremely different from drop-off and single-stream. Drop-off glass has a recovery rate of about 94%, where single-stream glass is only about 45 to 50% recoverable from the materials recovery facility that they go to. This is the type of glass that we accept in all of our drop-off bins. In Jefferson City, we have four different bins, and we take all of these items, and no sorting is required, all the labels can remain on. This is what cannot typically go in our bins. For example, like ceramics causes problems for our end-users. It melts at a different rate than other glass does, so that's why it can't go in there. And unfortunately, contamination for drop-off programs is just part of the program, but it can be managed. This is a picture of Jefferson City's glass from a News Tribune article that was done in January. There was a sudden increase in the contamination, the glass that we were receiving from Jefferson City, but we worked very quickly with staff to figure out, try to find where that contamination could be coming from and how we could get it to stop. So this is our current glass coming from Jefferson City. Staff was extremely great at taking ownership of their program, and we did some education on the bins to make sure that each bin said "no bags, no boxes" on them. The News Tribune articles ran to let everybody know how important it is to keep your quality of your materials clean and to continue to do that, so we're very grateful that we were able to get all of the contamination out. Jefferson City has been recycling with us basically since our beginning in 2009. Next year, we'll be celebrating 10 years of recycling together. There are four different drop-offs in Jefferson City. The city started with two in 2010, expanded to four in 2012, and the four bins are picked up by Republic Services as part of their recycling contract, and then we pay for the cost of transportation from the bunker to our facility in Kansas City. So the cost to the city is extremely minimal. It takes 714 bottles to insulate an attic, and Jefferson City has recycled so much glass that you guys could insulate 155,292 attics. Our partnership with the City of Jefferson has been extremely great and extremely successful, so we just wanted to let you guys know what a great job you've been doing. The ownership that you take of your programs and the fact that you guys do have such a great recycling program in your community is definitely something that we tell other communities about. We use this program as an example when we're setting up other programs in other communities because it's done so well and so cost-effective. It's one of our better programs, and we appreciate everything that you guys do for us, and we look forward to a long relationship with you in the city.
Thank you, Lauren. Are there any questions of council? Well, we appreciate this service over the last nine years, and even though it has been going on for some time, there are still people that I run into that don't know and say, "I wish we could recycle glass here in the capital city," and we can, so it's nice to refer them to those four locations. And I know the city's website has a link to recycling, so if people want to get more information and connect directly to where those four locations are, they can get that on our website.
And just with the change going on in the industry right now, with, you know, the whole China thing going on, that is not something that is affecting the glass market, and it's not affecting our end-users, so we're not seeing any effect of that, and so we just wanted everybody to know that all we're doing is expanding and making glasses acceptable as we can make it, so.
Great. Well, we will continue to get the word out, and we also appreciate that you did a lot of work here at the city and started out here, right out of school, and now are continuing in the recycling world.
Yep.
So let's get a picture with council behind us and all of the Planning and Protective Services Department that's here, and then we will help you to continue to get this word out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Hank Stratman with the Eastside Business Association to present the Patriotic Roundabout Initiative, and you also have a guest with you this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. We'll be brief and quick. I want to first point out that I put on each of your table, Eastside Business's strategic review that we did, planning review, and in there, it kind of summarizes our focus for the long term, and we want to be more active partners in, not only with the city, but the county and the school districts in moving forward. And of course, our focus is the east side of Jeff City, but it affects Jeff City in total. We're here tonight to share with you the most recent initiative which we have done. Eastside Business partnered with the American Legion, and you see my partner here, DeeDee Maymark, not, sorry, DeeDee Kreiderman, used to be Maymark Real Estate, which I think many of you know her from the past, but she and her husband have been spearheading the Legion's contribution with helping us raise and design and build this awesome, awesome patriotic exhibit for the east roundabouts on East McCarty Street over by Walmart. Many of you know that for years, MoDOT, Walmart, the city has gotten some really bad press about how ugly those roundabouts look. And then about a year ago, MoDOT even went on the news and said, "Somebody, please, adopt these spots." Well, no takers except us, us being Eastside Business. So we went to them and said, "We're interested, but we want it on our terms." Same time, Capital Region designed that real nice one on Stadium and Jefferson. So we said, "We want to do something similar to what they did." And of course, you know, MoDOT kind of paused a little bit because that's new ground we were plowing. But anyway, long story short, after about eight months of negotiations, back and forth, what we could and couldn't do, and different concerns, which we resolved, they finally agreed to let us not only do something similar to what Capital Region do, but also turn it into a patriotic exhibit, of which we're going to promote the Pledge of Allegiance, support and defend the Constitution, freedom is not free, some gave all, all gave some, and the role that the Legion plays here in the community. DeeDee, I'm going to shut up now, let you talk for a second about where we're at with the Legion and what you're doing to make this happen.
Well, when Hank came to us, we were really excited about that, and of course, with the American Legion, especially Post 5, we're going to be celebrating our 100-year anniversary this year, and what a wonderful way to start it out again. So we definitely are there to support the program and do whatever we can do to help make the fundraising work, and I know that Post 5, we will be helping to maintain the flag. We'll also be putting a POW flag on the same flagpole. So the flagpole's been ordered, a lot of things are working, and we're real excited about it, and we'll, like I said, we'll be helping maintaining it. Thank you.
The six-foot-tall eagle is already in town at an undisclosed location. It's awesome. Now, what I really wanted to rest on tonight is let you know who's on the team, the design bill team. We have, first and foremost, Midwest Block and Brick, they were the first ones to help us join us. Walmart has given us a grant of $3,000, and we're working for a second grant from them. So they were early participants, along with Capitol Monuments and American Legion. Those four entities work together to get to what you see on that flyer. Now, we're in the process of broadening our search for funding. We need to raise 25K to pay for those monuments. Everything else is fundamentally paid for by donations from Cole County Concrete, donating all the concrete, Midwest Block and Brick, all the block. Myri Electric's going to help us with the electrical stuff. We've got a board underneath the highway, we've got to put in conduit, I mean, that's a big deal. Frank Tweigh House is on board with excavation and gravel, and you know, he owns most of the gravel in town, he and the farmer, so. So we've got, and then, most recently, this is as a result of the article in the paper last week, Chris Sheppertly, you know him, Cole County Commissioner, Western Commissioner, wanted to participate. So how can I participate? So, "Well, I really could use a landscaper to lay all these blocks I got." And he said, "Okay." He now is coordinating a team of landscapers, not just his company, but he's going to pull all that together in a very professional -- so we have a first-class team of business people across Jeff City. They're not all east-enders, and one more, Central Missouri Professional Resources for survey and then design work that they're doing for us. So we're real proud of the team we pulled together, and pat them on the back when you see them, okay? And timelines, we're going to start the spring as soon as the ground falls, so we can get the electrical conduits in, and we will have it done for the Fourth of July, totally, everything. Low maintenance, no shrubbery, no grass, all rock and nice stonework, and so something we can all be proud of to kind of set the standard for the entry into Jeff City from the east. I would ask you all to consider, after you see what Wright looks like, doing something for the north, south, and west highways, because we have similar locations that would just equally could use them dressing up. So Mayor, thank you, and council members for the opportunity to share this great experience with you, and, you know, feel free to contribute whatever your heart contends, we're taking all-size donations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stratman, and please share our appreciation with the Eastside Association. And if people want to get involved and contribute to the Patriotic Roundabouts, I'll give out your cell, which is on here, 573-230-5269. You can reach Hank directly. DeeDee's number as well is 573-680-1002. So please reach out to either of you if you'd like to contribute.
You can also go on our website, which is jcesba.org, and the American Legion Facebook site is.
Just go in through the American Legion Post 5, and you'll be able to pull it up.
Everything's there, so all these options. There's also a big sign at the Brew House Coffee with paper copies as well, so we're off and running, and I don't think we're going to have any trouble raising the money, but please, any donation would very well be accepted.
This will make the city look really nice there. Any council questions?
Questions for the council.
Okay, we'll do a quick picture so that you can promote this. And tell your dad hello, DeeDee, because your dad served on our original charter commission, so we appreciate him as well. Hank, a quick question. Someone just asked if it's tax deductible. Hank? Mr. Stratman? Is it tax deductible? Someone just asked.
The scheme is, if you want it to be for charity purposes, you send it to the American Legion.
Send to the American Legion for tax purposes.
If you're a major donor, send it to the Eastside Business. It is on that farm. Who should I give the election to? You already have it in the city hall. I gave it to your staff.
Great.
Then you will be mailed a certificate from the American Legion for tax purposes.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 5, we have three public hearings this evening. We'll start with Item A, Bill 2018-101.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing and amending and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 8.49 acres of land located at 311 and 320 Hoover Road from PUD Planned Unit Development to M1 Light Industrial.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this bill. Up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. Toward the bottom of the screen is the intersection of Highway 179 and Truman Boulevard, Industrial Drive. And so the property, or just north of that intersection, is the intersection of West Main Street and Highway 179. This property is located off of West Main Street on Hoover Road, right at the end of the cul-de-sac. It is eight and a half acres, currently zoned to PUD, Planned Unit Development Zoning District. This bill would rezone the property to an M1, a light industrial zoning category. The purpose of the rezoning quest is to accommodate the development of the property for Missouri American Water Offices and their operations facility, which is a conditional use of the M1 zoning district, meaning with outdoor storage, they would be required to obtain a conditional use permit for the full development of the property for that purpose. That is a process that goes in front of the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment. This matter of rezoning was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their January 10th meeting and was recommended for approval on a vote of eight to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Paul Sampson. I'm with Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street, and I'm here today to represent Missouri American Water on this rezoning matter. Missouri American Water has recently purchased the eight and a half acres at the end of Hoover Road. They did a fairly extensive search throughout their water service area and came upon this site, and they've actually already purchased the property. The property has historically been zoned industrial. In the early 2000s, it was rezoned to a high-density residential for the Cherry Creek development, which failed shortly after starting construction. At the time of the Cherry Creek development, the site was mass-grated and utilities were extended to the site in order to serve the development. As I said, only a handful of apartments were constructed at the time, and the remainder of the property has been vacant ever since. In 2002, there was a rezoning of the property to the current PUD, and that was for a senior housing duplex development. We got through the plans on that, and before any construction was started, that idea was abandoned. So as I said, Missouri American Water has recently purchased the property. The industrial zoning is needed in order to accommodate their operations, part of their development, which will include some outdoor storage materials, and as Eric said, that requires a conditional use permit through the Board of Adjustment, and we've submitted the plan for that, and I think that's going to be in front of the Board of Adjustment in March. Prior to the meeting, I did hand out the copy of the site plan that was submitted to the Board of Adjustment. There's a -- the development on the site includes approximately 5,000 square feet of office space, which would be lined up directly north of the Hoover Road roundabout. There would be adequate parking available for office staff, customers, as well as visitors for a meeting room that's planned inside the building. There's an existing storage building that's located just to the east of the round, or to the west of the roundabout. They believe that that existing office building would be used for a laboratory for testing of water and wastewater samples that the water company has to do. Directly north of the office would be their operations facility. It'll be separated from the public parking lots and access to the office. There'll be an equipment garage, covered canopy for the storage of parts and materials, and the outdoor storage for, storage of aggregates and things of that nature. We believe that the proposed use and zoning fits well within the existing surrounding properties. The properties to the south are already zoned industrial. The Federal Recycling Center is located just to the south of that. To the west is property that is currently zoned commercial. It also includes the existing Missouri American Water Tower and the city's new fire station. That property sits at a pretty significant elevation difference, so impacts to that property will be minimal. To the north and the east are residential zone properties. North is the Cherry Creek properties, the apartments that were done at that time, and to the east is the -- development is gonna be a significant distance even away from the property lines, so we're showing a minimum of a 50-foot buffer, but in reality, it'll probably be extensively more than that. At this time, I'll let Mr. Bob Geltz from Missouri American Water explain the reason for needing to relocate their facilities.
And I should clarify that that should be 10 instead of 5 minutes, so don't, you don't have 18 seconds. You're good. Welcome.
Thank you. Again, my name is Bob Geltz with Missouri American Water. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. As you're aware, the water plant that we have here was built in 1888, with the last major upgrade being in 1964. Since then, we've had several improvements, as we continue to try and make the facility reliable for Jefferson City, City of Jefferson. We are finishing a large planning study, and we're gonna have about a five-year plan to upgrade the facility even further. We wanna make it an even more reliable facility, upgrade the safety standards, and upgrade a lot of the equipment that, some of it is from the 1920s and even earlier than that. So, as part of this expansion, we're gonna need some additional land. As you're aware, we're kind of landlocked, and one of the options we were looking at is moving the office building and some of the wastewater facilities that are on-site, and to do that, we needed a new spot, as Paul said. We've looked at this spot. We think it's the best spot for us. Not only will it allow us to consolidate some things, but allow us to expand some of our office meeting room capacity, which will allow us to bring in more people from different areas of the state, or more central location for meetings, et cetera, through the year. So, we're excited to continue to provide water for the City of Jefferson, and we look forward to this expansion being more of a reliability, safety, planning-for-the-future type of work.
Well, thank you for continuing to invest in our community. We appreciate that very much. Any questions of council, of either of the speakers at this point? Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak on Bill 2018-101? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up the bill.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 8.49 acres of land located at 311 and 320 Hoover Road from PUD Planned Unit Development to M1 Light Industrial.
Any further council questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Abstain.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. Thank you. Item B, we have Resolution 2018-31.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 612 East McCarty Street.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, first, give a brief overview of short-term zoning, short-term rental zoning regulations as they pertain to the city. These regulations were established in January of last year, so they're about a year old, fairly, fairly new in terms of zoning. And the regulations have generally two parts. Whenever staff were putting together the regulations for consideration by council back last year, we tried to do a lot of research on what some of the general concerns regarding short-term rentals were, and outlined operating standards for short-term rentals within our community that all of them would have to adhere to. And so, the operating standards include items such as the number of guests that would be permitted at a, at a short-term rental, the parking situation, making sure that a property has adequate parking, prohibition on parties or receptions, large gatherings at a short-term rental, making sure that the, if it's a home, it maintains a residential appearance, making sure that it's properly inspected, and then also ensuring that any short-term rental obtains a business license and pays lodging tax. In addition to those operating standards, then there was also a zoning permit, or the correct term is actually a special exception permit process put in place, that an applicant for a short-term rental in certain zoning districts, namely, single-family districts, would be, would apply for, for this permit in order to operate that use. And so, that is what is before you tonight, is a special exception permit. There's actually two of them on the agenda. And so, the first of those is located at 612 East McCarty Street, as the clerk read. So, this resolution would approve use of 612 East McCarty Street as a short-term rental of the entire residence. And this property is located on East McCarty Street, literally just two blocks from City Hall. So, up on the screen is a location map with McCarty Street here, kind of toward the center, and so, City Hall literally is just located off the upper right, or upper left-hand corner of the screen. The property is zoned an RA2, multi-family residential zoning district, is also located within the recently established School Street Local Historic District. And so, this is an aerial photo of the property at the front edge on East McCarty Street and access from the alley located behind it. Outside of that, as I mentioned, the resolution would approve use of that property as a short-term rental. The property owner would also have to adhere to all of the operating standards for short-term rental use as well, in terms, and of course, get proper business licensing and inspections. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Councilman Prather?
You mentioned special exceptions, that they'd have, they'd be able to qualify if they had special exceptions. What are those special exceptions?
The special exception permit is the name for a specific type of zoning permit. The use, the term "special exception" basically applies to, when you open the zoning code and you look at the, where different types of land uses are permitted, you know, compared to the different zoning districts. There are many uses that are permitted outright in certain zoning districts. There are many uses that are prohibited in certain zoning districts. And then, there are certain uses that, because of their nature, have high potential for impact on surrounding property. And so, those uses require some sort of special process associated with them. There are two types of processes in the zoning code. One is a conditional use permit process, where those types of uses go in front of the Board of Adjustment for conditional use permits. The other is the special exception permit process, where that use, application goes in front of first, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then on to the city council for, for final decision on that application. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I just would have been more, a little more clear as to how we decide if one would qualify for a special exemption.
There, it's largely based on impact on surrounding property and whether that, that type of use has a, has a high degree of impact on surrounding property, and whether it meets the standards for, for such a thing within the, contained within the zoning code.
You say impact, positive, negative, types of impacts? What are we talking about? What impacts are you talking about, as far as bringing the value up, bringing the value down of the neighborhood?
I think in general, looking for if there's negative impacts on surrounding property, that I might lean toward the city councilor for a better description of that.
Yeah, the impacts generally that are being contemplated are potential negative impacts. And so, a conditional use permit process, or a special exception permit process allows the decision-making body to put conditions on that permit to help ameliorate those impacts. So, if something has a high, let's say, traffic impact, the city council can require, as part of the permit, something to help mitigate those traffic impacts. So, it's a way to allow a use in an area while at the same time addressing the potential negative impacts that that use can have on the neighborhood. So, it's, you know, it's really a determination of, does this use work in this neighborhood, and is there anything we need to do to take a situation where it wouldn't work and transform it into something that could work?
Councilman Prather?
I have a follow-up to that. Say, for example, I owned a home, and I decided to move, and I was going to just rent it out. What, how would that differ than doing something like this?
And so, a short-term rental, as defined by, by the zoning code, we put in a definition for short-term rental at the same time as when the, the standards were, and process were adopted. It's really a rental of less than 30 days, so that's, that's the definition. And so, as a, as a property owner, you're, you have the right to rent your property on a month-to-month, you know, or greater basis. If you're renting your property for less than a month, then it falls into this short-term rental definition, and so then it's, it's subject to special exception permit review.
So, if they decided that they wanted just to rent this out for longer term, they wouldn't have to go through this process?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you. If, if I could help clarify, so generally, generally, kind of nationally, that 30-day mark denotes the difference between a residential use. Any, any rental for more than 30 days is considered a residential use. Any rental for less than 30 days is more akin to a, a commercial use, like a hotel. It's for transient guests who aren't permanently residing in the city. So, that's, that's kind of a national standard at 30 days. More than a month is residential, less than a month is more akin to commercial-type uses. So, we would have no authority to regulate if it was more than 30 days, that you just do it? Uh, yeah, that's, that's correct, because it's a residential use. Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilwoman Ward, and then Mr. Graham.
Would a single-family rental home be allowed to put signage on the property? Like with the Airbnb ordinance, we allow, I think it's a one-foot signage?
The signage regulations applicable for single-family homes are quite complex. I mean, there's, there's a variety of non-commercial signage that's allowed for property. In terms of commercial signage, I think that the general answer would be no. For a short-term rental, the signage limitation is contained within those operating standards. They're limited to one square foot of that commercial signage, which must be attached to the residence. And that standard is actually the same as allowed for a home occupation, a home-based business. There are certain allowances for home-based businesses contained within the zoning code.
Councilman Graham?
Yes, Mr. Barron, how many of these special exception permits has come before the council? I can't remember.
I believe the answer is six, and...
And out of those six, have all six passed?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't, I don't want the citizens to think that just because it comes before this body, that it automatically passes. So, I'm glad to see that you broke down the explanation of the reasons why we would approve or not approve of a special permit, so, yeah.
Any further questions before we open the hearing? Councilman Fitzwater?
I apologize. I'm asking questions for both of you guys, and I'm going to do it twice. I think the council, the Prather, the Gates, the 35, 41, 35, 13, separate things, you guys have to meet, and I don't know if you're, you know, before, I think they need, but the team, I would like to find, I think, what I'm also looking for, is, folks, I'm expecting a top left, and I'm, 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 I've heard from a number of people, they've been very pleasant, they have been very open, and I've tried to do the same thing back, and I appreciate many of them being here tonight, and, you know, I think this is what the process is about, and I'll try to apply the codes as we currently have them against this issue, so thanks.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
And thank you for that, that comment of Councilman Fitzwater, I totally agree. If we need to go back and actually relook at that section, but I was also glad to hear that Mr. Barron did say that when we do vote on these different special permit uses, that we ask ourselves, does this use work in this neighborhood? So we take each individual permit that's coming for us on a case-by-case basis, and we ask ourselves, does this use work in this neighborhood? So I just wanted to point that out.
Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for Resolution 201831, and how this works, so we'll have two public hearings. We're starting with this McCarty Street property that we're talking about. Usually, we'll have the applicant start and speak about the, they will speak first, and then we usually alternate from different sides, whether it's in favor, we'll do kind of the pro-con-pro approach that way. You don't have to sign up to speak at the public hearing, but we do have people signed up, so I also want to make sure that I clarify who's signed up for which one. So really quickly, there's five people signed up, and I want to make sure, because they say short-term rental, but not always, I want to see if, so we call on the right people. Robert Gretz, are you for the McCarty or for the other? Robert, is there a Robert here? Okay, and Brenda Presbiting, I'm sorry, Brenda, and are you for the, the second one? Okay, and maybe I said that, Robert, who signed up first? Is there still a Robert here? Okay, and then we have a William Kramer, yes, are you for which one? The second one, thank you. And then Diana Buchanan?
She's here for something different.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's for something later, okay, different subject. And then Martha is here for short-term rental, Clean East, is it this one or the next one? The second one, okay. All right, so on this one now, for the 612 East McCarty, we can have the applicant come forward and speak. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Smith. Tony and I own 612 East McCarty. It was recently vacated, and we decided to pursue turning it into an Airbnb or a Verbo, vacation rental by owner. It is rather conveniently located, close to downtown, close to Lincoln U., close to Jeff City High School, close to the MSP site, so we feel like it, it would fill a need, and I, we've, we've visited Airbnbs in other cities and found them a very pleasant way to visit a city. Our neighborhood is, where a lot of rental in the neighborhood. I have heard from a couple of the neighbors and, who were asking about the sign in our yard, and we talked about it, and they seemed to be very happy with it, so I haven't encountered any opposition from anybody in the neighborhood.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? All right, so is there anyone else here for 612 East McCarty? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take this up, take up Resolution 201831.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 612 East McCarty Street.
We'll open it up for council questions and deliberation, and we'll also be looking for a motion. Anyone would like to start off the discussion? Councilman Fitzwater? I'm sorry, Mahalovich?
I got a question with regard, I should have asked this before the hearing started. I noticed that in the planning and zoning, this is probably directed to Eric, in the planning and zoning, when we, the library did the last two at Hastings, there were six items that the staff had in their analysis. Those six items were not included in these two that we're seeing tonight. Is there a reason for that change?
We have tried to expand our staff report a little bit more, and so that took, took place between those two meetings, trying to do a more thorough job of going over the review, and so I think that's the difference between the two, and those, those items are the, the criteria for a special exception permit. It's contained within the zoning code.
Had you reviewed these two properties, would you have checked those similarly, you think?
Yes.
Okay, fair good. Thank you.
Okay, and why don't I, at this time, ask for a motion to take up Resolution 201831, and we'll have debate about that specific resolution? Okay, so we have the resolution on the table, is there any further questions, deliberation? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Upstang?
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item C, Resolution 201832.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 1500 Timber Trail.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this request. Up on the screen is a location map. The property is highlighted, it shows up fairly small on the screen, located here. Toward the bottom of the screen is Missouri Route C, and almost at the middle bottom is the intersection of Route C and Vith Drive, and so this property is located in a neighborhood, basically, off of Vith Drive. And the property is zoned in RS, a single-family residential zoning district, and there on the screen is an aerial photo of the property. This resolution would approve use of the property as a short-term rental, both as a rental for the entire home and also as a rental of a single lodging unit within the home. Those two categories are differentiated between the, within the zoning code, but the process to approve them is the same, so the property owner is seeking approval of both of them at the same time in order to retain some flexibility. This item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of January 10th and was recommended for approval on a vote of six to zero. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, thank you, and we will open the public hearing portion for Resolution 201832, and we'll typically start with the applicant. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay, and then, like I mentioned earlier, you don't have to sign up, but I am going to start with those that did sign up, and then if there is anyone else that would like to speak on the bill. So let's start with, we have Brenda Presbiting, and I apologize that I said that wrong. Propstein.
But that's very understandable.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am Brenda Propstein, this is my husband Fred, we live at 1506 Timber Lane. The property that they were speaking about is a corner lot, and our property faces the side yard there. We're on a dead, a dead-end street, there's not very many houses right there. Mayor Turgon and the city council members, it is an opportunity here to give our input, and we thank you for that, we thank you for this opportunity. We also want to thank the members of the council who were so good in giving their time to speak with us on the phone and offer their expertise, and we really do appreciate that. We are opposed to issuing a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental at 1500 Timber Trail. We sent a letter on February 7th, 2019, that should be in your packet. We've lived in our home for over 30 years, the neighborhood is stable and property is well-maintained, there's low turnover of property. We've, we're located steps from Cedar Hill Elementary School. We are not located in a historic tourist blighted or business area. Allowing a short-term rental in our deeply embedded, a deeply residentially embedded, family-oriented community has a destabilizing effect. I call to your attention the petition that was signed by our neighbors, and it's in opposition to the special exception permit for short-term rental at 1500 Timber Trail. I believe you were given that just prior to the meeting. The signatures represent 100% of the homeowners in the 185-foot notification buffer, as well as the majority of those just outside the buffer area. The neighbors in attendance tonight who are in opposition to the special exception permit for short-term rental, case number P19003, please stand. Thank you. Our city's comprehensive plan states a goal of contributing to the enhanced quality of life for its residents. We want a higher standard than the one comparing the worst-case scenario for a single-family residential zone to the best-case scenario for a short-term rental. This is an unfair and unrealistic comparison. Commercialized transient use of residential properties can pose safety and privacy concerns. Current short-term rental ordinance does little to address ongoing regulatory oversight in regard to public safety. Once issued, which is for the entire time that the homeowner owns the property, the one who's granted this permit, once issued, there is a lack of quantitative measure for reviewing or revoking the short-term rental permit. We have children living in and near the 185-foot notification buffer. Being proactive in protecting their safety is of utmost importance. Strangers paying to come in and out of a nearby residence pose a safety and security risk. When moving to Jefferson City, we were told this was a good place to raise a family. We have stayed in our home for 30, over 30 years, and as well as a lot of the people in that neighborhood, we discovered it was a very good place to live. We were, we were told this as we came in, and that's, that was as promised. Now we're hearing things that are not quite the same. We're hearing the words minimal negative impact, and it could be worse. There's a higher bar that can be set by the city council, and your opportunity to do so is now. We have concern regarding negative impact on our property value. In speaking with the executive director of the Missouri Real Estate Commission, there is no data available for the effect of short-term rental on the value of neighboring homes and residential communities, so any assumptions have no empirical data behind them. But further, we were also told that Chapter 339 of the Missouri Revised Statutes requires real estate licensees, licensees, sorry, to disclose a material fact which may affect the value of the property, which could also include disclosure of neighboring short-term rentals. A violation of this disclosure could result in the seller and the listing real estate agency being sued. This information gives me pause. We are in a family-oriented, deeply residential neighborhood. It is difficult to imagine how a short-term rental in our location could enhance the sale or value of our home due to this disclosure law. We have, all, we all of us chose this neighborhood with the single-family residential zoning laws in place. It gave us confidence to invest our money in our homes and plan for the future. Now one owner, homeowner is requesting an exception. All of the neighbors in the notification buffer, as well as the majority of those immediately outside the buffer area, are documented in opposition to this special exception permit to operate short-term rental at 1500 Timber Trail. Surely, the right of one homeowner does not supersede the rights of the majority of neighboring homeowners. Short-term rental is not a good fit for our neighborhood. It does not enhance the quality of life, protect property values, or safety of the surrounding homeowners. This request should be denied. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, any questions? Okay.
I just, I just have a statement.
Yes.
Ms. Propstein, thank you and your husband for reaching out to me when we first heard about this, and I have had a chance to go by this place that's, that's been, as for the special exception, and I do share the concerns in which you and the other residents share as well, too, so I just want to say thank you for the conversations that we've had, the text messages and everything, so.
Yes, and I do want to indicate, we appreciate your support, we also appreciate the expertise that have been shown to us and given to us, and the encouragement, because it, for a citizen, just an average citizen, it's a little difficult to do a crash course on some of these issues, so I really appreciate you all helping us and encouraging us to continue to represent our neighborhood in a appropriate way, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzwater?
I echo the comments of my colleague from the Fourth Ward, that they have been very professional in sharing information with me, I very much appreciate. We've had a couple of conversations, I guess, and text messages, information, so I appreciate all that you've done, and it's been very professional. At the Dome or here, we don't always see folks that utilize the system appropriately, but they have very much utilized the system to try to change something that they're against, so I appreciate it very much.
And I would also call your attention to several neighbors here who have also said very professionally, Rick Weathers, and to the city council, which you should also.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. William Kramer. Welcome.
Glad to be able to talk with you all tonight. I live at 1516 Timber Trail, which is three houses away down the hill from the proposed site. I have a lot of, I retired a few years ago, I was looking for, well, I was a Jeff City resident before, but I moved out of town and I come back, I was looking for a decent place to live, so I looked around and I found a nice vacant lot. I built a home in that section, so the last home that's been built in there, it was built in 1993. I've loved every minute I've been there. I hate to have things change, something may cause the value of my home to decrease, I'm older age, so I may have to move the property in a few years, which would be a detriment to the amount I could probably get from it. I have another problem. It's, this property is less than 500 feet, probably, from Cedar Hill School. I run into a problem a few years ago with a relative, he was wanting to stay a few ti- a little bit with me for a while, and he could not stay there because he was a sex offender, which, it wasn't with children or anything like that, but he couldn't stay there because it was too close to school. So what my problem is, I'm worried about, if they rent this out to someone, who do they know they're renting it to? I'm worried about that, that, that's my biggest concern. I just, most of the stuff I had wanted to talk about, Ms. Propstein already covered, so I don't, won't take up more of your time on it, but I, I would really ask that you turn down this request, I really feel it's not in the interest of our area, because, like you said, they're all single residents, probably mostly, I think there's only one or two rental places in it, the rest are all owner-occupied, and that's why I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you. We have Martha Clean East. Welcome.
Mayor Turgon and members of the city council. My name is Martha Clean East, and I live at 1520 Timber Trail. Since I attended the planning and zoning meeting, I have researched short-term rentals, calling various Jefferson City personnel, cities surrounding Jefferson City, and internet searches on states, cities, to better prepare for this meeting. There have been six applications for short-term rental presented to the City Planning and Zoning Commission. All have been approved, four in commercial areas and two in residential areas. Four of the applicants have been approved by the city council. One of the two yet to be approved by the council is located in my area. I would like to comment on these locations. 412 Cherry Street, there are many commercial establishments surrounding this property, and I've handed out a packet to everyone. There are high wooden fences, commercial buildings, city transit depot, depot, and boarded-up houses. Of the 28 nearby property owners contacted by the city of this rezoning, 10 residents listed that have the same address. Miller is a busy street with, with buses running daily. 500 East McCarty, East Miller Street, this home is located from, across from Simonson, and surrounded by a lot of commercial establishments. Jackson Street runs alongside of this address and is a very busy street. 1001 West High Street, there's the city water tower, and down on McCarty Street is a bar and other commercial buildings, and also an industrial drive. Here again, High Street is a very highly traversed street. Out of the 27 owners contacted by the city of the rezoning, only five residents are listed on that, with the same address. Some of the other properties are owned by people from Virginia, Illinois, Tennessee, St. Louis, Nevada, and surrounding communities. 612 East McCarty Street, which was approved tonight, is commercial, and McCarty Street is very traverse. 1632 Tanner Bridge Road is, is in the area of American Legion, Turpin's Auto Shop, National Guard, Knights of Columbus, and workforce development, and here again, Tanner Bridge is very diverse. The only really true resident is 134 West Circle, and it's on RS3, single-family residential. Within blocks, you have High Street Pizza, a garden, nursery, Angelina's Restaurant, and a gas station, and the owners live in Lee Summit. There are repeated reports of disgruntled neighbors complaining about loud parties, dogs walking, and leaving feces on the property, problems with parking. They resent the constant strangers' noise and other nuisance associated with short-term rentals. KC TV5 reported Airbnb's using for swing clubs. St. Louis Post Dispatch listed a letter from Joe Harrigan, and he reported, he lives in the St. Louis Hills neighborhood, they've parked on our lawns, had marking dogs and screaming children outside our bedroom window, and I had to pick up their trash left behind. We finally erected a 25-foot fence to keep some privacy, to the tune of $2,000. National Association of Realtors, homes could be available for rent or sale to local residents, are instead being bought up by investors enlisted on short-term rentals. Look at the list that I've given you of the people that own property in these areas and don't even live in, in these homes. don't even live in, in these homes. Critics are calling short-term rentals good-for-nothing or dishonest hotels, because unlike hotels, short-term rentals have virtually no oversight or accountability, potentially creating a public safety hazard. As a result, short-term rentals have become a political hotspot, hot potato in communities across our nation, and just look at the problems that I have reported. I live in the Cedar Hill Elementary School area. You can go for blocks around our area, and you will not find any commercial establishments. My street is off the beaten path with very little traffic passing through. Most of the people who traverse our streets are its residents. It's a very quiet, quaint, close-knit, safe neighborhood. We all have owned our homes and lived there 20, 30, 40-plus years. I do not like the idea of transit's coming in and out of the neighborhood. There are ideal places in the city of Jefferson City for Airbnbs or short-term rentals. Capital Avenue loves above downtown businesses where there are shops, restaurants, and historic places to visit. Airbnbs have no place in a, in a residential neighborhood.
Thank you.
I recently attended a meeting where the speaker made this statement. Rules are made by people, but they do not follow their own rules. Jefferson City requires men's on a home-based business. If you look on your sheet number two-
Thank you, Mrs. Kleendeece, and we might have to wrap up, so if there's others to speak, they can come forward as well. Any closing, or any questions for Mrs. Kleendeece? Okay, thank you very much. Any further, those are the ones that we have signed up this evening. You don't have to be signed up to come and speak. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak on the open hearing portion? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kellie Bederson. I live at 1511 Veeth. It's directly across the street from Cedar Hill. I'm right outside of the people that got notifications, so my, Brenda came up and told me about it yesterday, so I don't really know much about it. But I just wanted to emphasize how many children live in our area. With me living right across the street from the school, at the end of the day, when the kids get out of school, there's mobs of kids that walk by my house, and they walk through my backyard, a lot of them, down toward Timber Trail. And as an example, when I was leaving today, I decided to drive by to see exactly which houses was talking about, and there was a little boy on a bike riding up the middle of the street when I was going down there. And then, two hours later, I picked up my neighbor and was going to show her where it was, and there was another kid riding some kind of scooter thing up the street. So, there are a lot of children that play in this area and walk through this area, and I don't think we need strangers living there. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Resolution 201832? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we will take up the resolution.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addresses 1500 Timber Trail.
And at this time, we will ask for a motion to take up this resolution, and I know there's been some question of whether it would be taken up or whether we need more information. And I would certainly say, after hearing the deliberation this evening of the public, that I would encourage council to take this up this evening, and although I know that I will not have an opportunity to vote tonight, because it, it will not be a tie this evening, that Councilman Fitzwater had some very valid points earlier, saying that if it meets the criteria, you know, we look at the ordinance and it meets the criteria. When it comes out of planning and zoning, certainly, their job is to, you know, really evaluate whether it meets the criteria, but when it comes here, it is our job to really look at, is it the best fit in our community and for the specific neighborhood? And the applicant is not even here this evening to speak, and not even having the applicant here, and I happen to know the applicant, I think she's a very good person, but I think it's, it's, shows a lot that the application, the applicant is not even here to speak, and we have not had one person come to the podium in favor of this. Every neighbor that has come forward has been opposed for several reasons. So, certainly, we could say it meets the criteria, but does it really meet the criteria to fit in this neighborhood? And if I were voting, and if it were a tie, I would vote no. I would vote that this does not fit the neighborhood based on these comments, based on the fact the applicant is not here, and for all of those reasons, I feel we have sufficient information in front of us that this should not be placed in this neighborhood. And like Councilman Graham said, you know, there's a reason they all come before us, and that the other six were good fits. We just voted on one prior to this and passed it. So, certainly, I, I want to say that, even though knowing I won't get the opportunity to have a vote, and would rely on council. So, with that being said, I saw two hands. I saw Graham and Fitzwater, and I don't know who was first.
I'll let Councilman Fitzwater go first.
Fitzwater? Yes.
I made a commitment to you. I'm sorry. I'm on holes. I made a commitment to these folks when we talked over the last, I guess, six weeks. I appreciate Ms. Kleendeece. She sent us a long, three-pager. I went through all of it. I hit all the links. I can't commit that I read everything, but I skimmed every document. Do we have an indication, Ms. Glazier indicated she would not be here tonight? Did she, I mean, she knew this hearing was going on.
Not that I'm aware of, Mrs. Donaldson.
I didn't receive anything.
We didn't receive any, and it's not a requirement, certainly. It's not a requirement that anyone is here, but-
Absolutely. The, the other sentence I read said that there will be a hearing to discuss this issue. These fine folks have come out and done their due diligence. So, I'm a no on this. If we vote, I am against this proposal. I had questions for her. I don't think it's fair to ask these folks to come back to another public hearing, do have to go through this again, so if we put it on the table, I'm a no.
Councilman Graham?
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater, for that. And after, sitting here thinking about it, because I was going to ask that we take this up at a different date, but like I said, I don't want constituents coming back. We've heard from them. I've been over there several times, and as I continue to ask myself over and over again, and the question was, the statement was, was made tonight, and that is, does this use work in this neighborhood? And honestly, if, if you, I never looked at it from the air, air photo and all of that, if you actually go over there, you'd have to say no. So, I am willing to take this up tonight for a vote.
Councilman Schreiber?
Based on the fact that the individual property owner that wishes for this to be changed or passed is not present, then, then my vote would be no as well on this. So, I feel like that it's beneficial to take it up this evening as well.
Councilman David Kimna?
And I know Ms. Smith spoke prior, and like, I'm for Airbnbs. I think they're, they're beneficial to communities, and I know, like, with yours that passed, it serves a purpose. And I know when I spoke to them, you know, I had some skepticism, because I feel like Airbnb's work, but after the overwhelming response, and I work with Julie, and knowing that, so it was a kind of a tough spot that I was in, but, you know, just with what you've said and what I've heard, I've been convinced that this is not the best fit for this area. So, I appreciate everything you guys have done in your research and bringing this forward and for us, so.
So, would council like to-
I'll make a motion that we take up this-
2018-32?
2018-31, right?
32?
32.
Second. We have a motion and second. Further council discussion? Mr. Malman?
Just as a procedural clarification, this should be stated as a motion to approve, and then that would take a majority vote of six council members to approve the permit, but it is through, with this type of application, it is appropriate to state the motion in the affirmative. So, I just want to confirm that that is in fact the motion.
So, I would change that to a motion to approve of the RS2018-32.
And we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Nay.
Hussey?
Nay.
Kimna?
No.
Mahalovich?
No.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
No.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
No.
Resolution fails. Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. Item six, we'll move on to appointments by the mayor. Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. We have three reappointments this evening to the facade committee, or facade improvement committee. Those are Doug Record, Brad Schaefer, and Jim Crabtree. And I would like to just point out that Jim Crabtree and Brad Schaefer have both served two full terms, so this would be asking to approve them each for a third full term, so it will require two-thirds majority approval of the council.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the slate of Boarder Commission?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, we've taken up already, so item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Are there any committee, committee announcements? Councilman Prather?
Yes, we have a finance meeting in, in the Boomcraft Room across the hall, Thursday at 7:30.
Okay. Item B, we, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Mahalovich?
Do we have a public safety meeting coming up? It seemed like I just heard, is it, it was announced today, but it's for the following week, right?
The 28th, 7:30.
Okay.
Okay, so, public safety, you said, is the 28th at 7:30. Any other committees? And these are all listed on our website, JeffersonCityMo.gov. All right, item B, the bicentennial 2021. I have at everybody's place some information about the bicentennial, and I'm very fortunate to be serving on the State's Bicentennial Commission. Governor Parson appointed a statewide group that will be working on the State's Bicentennial, so I'm the co-chair, along with former Senator Ron Richard. So, very happy to be serving in that position. Jefferson City also has a local committee, which is led by our Convention and Visitors Bureau and the library, and they're, they've been meeting regularly, so we're ahead of the curve. And something exciting to report is the bicentennial bridge is an endorsed project of the bicentennial commission. The, they're asking that each city and county around the state do different projects that will commemorate the bicentennial, so very exciting. But I have at your place something about the penny drive. So, they're doing a penny drive, and they're asking all the schools in Missouri to save their pennies and do a penny drive, and they're going to use the, the funds that are raised to maintain some of the historic documents from the beginning of our statehood. So, that's kind of exciting to think of what's coming up, and even though it's 2021, it's just around the corner, so it's good to be thinking about it. So, at every council meeting from now on, we'll just have a quick moment of something that's going on to commemorate the bicentennial. So, right now, on this meeting, it's the penny drive. So, and then, item C, we have an announcement by Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you. I just, I'll be quick as possible. We were scheduled to hold an informational meeting about the West Main Street Historic Resources Survey Project. It was scheduled for tomorrow evening, but due to the forecasted weather, it has been rescheduled to Tuesday, February 26 at 6:00 p.m. in these council chambers. So, basically, it's been moved back a week, and we encourage anyone to come and find out what a historic resources survey is, and what's the purposes of those surveys, and to learn more about the project. And just a real quick, up there on the screen is a map of our proposed survey area, which includes 155 properties, which covers 45 acres. The survey will document the resources within General Realty, Wall &amp; Co. Place, and Lynn Hart's subdivisions, and these resources are primarily residential and represent a range of residential architectural styles from the post-World War II era. So, please come and see us next Tuesday, February 26 at 6:00 p.m. in this, in this room.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Yeah, I won't be able to make this change of date, but, but I, I didn't realize that we were only doing the north side of, of West Main, and I wasn't really aware until I got some calls about the circle streets, which I think is excellent, but why did we not do both sides of the Main Street?
That's a very good question. It's my full intention to get the whole area in general surveyed, but through the Historic Preservation Fund grant, which is funding this survey, there's time periods, and so the State Historic Preservation Office limits the survey numbers to about 150 properties each, so it's going to be a multi-phase project. But yes, not saying any of the other areas is not worthy, it's just we had to start somewhere. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, and then we have, Councilman Fitzwater would like to give us a Rotary announcement.
Apologize again, but the Downtown Rotary is doing a chicken dinner fundraiser on March the 15th at the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. It's a Friday night from 5:30 to 8:00. It's $15 per person, $25 per couple, includes chicken, mashed potatoes, two sides, and a dessert. And the exciting thing is, all of the benefits, the proceeds, go to Cole County Health Department, one of our good partners, Council for Drug-Free Youth, and the JC Rotary Club. I brought flyers, but I would be glad to email it to you. I try not to touch them too much, but you may not want to. And if you have any questions, James Clark is coordinating it for us, and his cellular number is 694-1770. James can help you, or club president can probably do a much better-
I was just going to say that Halo is also one of the beneficiaries, yeah.
So, email that out to us.
If you would like a flyer, I'll be glad to send it out to you.
Okay, please send that out, and that reminds me, too, I believe Breakfast Rotary, we're having our midwinter barbecue, and I think it's this Friday night, the 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, but I need to, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but some great Rotary projects, so we will do that.
Can I make one?
Yes.
I would point out that the Lieutenant Governor is a member of the Downtown Rotary Club, and I know we got into a fun time on Saturday, and just from the mayor's perspective, I appreciate everybody that helped us on the food drive for the mansion. The governor and Ms. Parson have done an amazing job, and I think I just stole the mayor's thunder, so forget everything I just said.
No, keep on, because that's what I, that leads me right into the food drive. So, if you're wondering why I'm wearing this shirt, it was for the Heart of the Hungry Food Drive, and that was very successful, and how cool was it to have a food drive right here at the governor's mansion, and they gave tours of the mansion for people that came to bring food, which was really neat. It's the first time they've ever done that, and it was sponsored by the Missouri Mansion. The Friends of the Mansion hosted that, and of course, Governor Mike and Teresa Parson were there, and along with Lieutenant Governor Kehoe. So, these shirts, if you want one, they're $20, and they say that the $20 will buy $421 worth of groceries for the food bank. I'm not sure how they do it, but they do, so they made this special shirt. But we also had a friendly competition between the wards, and it was so great to see council members that showed up. So, I know you've all been waiting for this. I know Jamie, I know everybody's been waiting. Who, who's the winner? So, I'm going to start with the third runner-up. When I say your name, if you'd come forward over here, so third runner-up goes to Councilman Hussey. And I have to say, it's not you that won this, but it's Eleanor, for your conversation that Eleanor had with the governor about Frozen Movie Number Two coming out, and how his grandkids are so excited about Frozen, and Eleanor told them all about that. So, you are the third runner-up. You have to come up. Congratulations! Yay! But Eleanor certainly deserves the shirt, but this is for you. Stay up here. Okay, so in second place is Councilman Fitzwater from Ward Four. So, come on up.
We should have been first. We should have been first, Councilman.
He claimed Carlos was there on social media, and I said, "I didn't see Carlos." I think he really tried. So, here's a shirt for you. He even said that with the mayor being in Fourth Ward and the Lieutenant Governor, he really, really tried to pull that one, to come through as the winner. So, the first-place winner is Ward Number Two. So, we have Mah- So we have Mahalovich and Laura Ward, if you two would come forward. And this was the only ward that actually had both representatives there, which was great. And I hope I didn't miss anyone else that showed up, but I know Sonny also brought food along with a few other, thank you, some planning and protective services brought food in advance. So these are our ward winners. So first place is Ward Two. So thank you all. If you want a shirt, they are available for sale, so please buy one if you were not one of our lucky contributors already, and they are available, so please do. They're selling those through the Friends of the Mansion. So thanks to everyone that helped. They were hoping to raise two thousand and nineteen pounds, and they raised over three thousand pounds of food. So it's the first time, so just wait till next year. We're already scheming, I already heard people scheming on how they're going to win. So would you mind, Gail, to take a picture of all of us up here with our, all the winners, ward winners?
Councilman Fitzwater, sorry I wasn't there. My wife has surgery, so I had to be there. So I was at home, I was at home taking care of my wife.
And I will say that Councilman Mahalovich did make it very clear that the governor lives in Ward Two, so, but that's not why you won. So, oh, and Councilman Hussey made it clear that the director manager of the food bank, the district manager lives in Third Ward. So this was a really tough one here to judge, but the mayor's judgments are final, so. Uh, I think, oh, great.
Just that one spot.
The lobbying has begun. Okay, we don't have Carol in here. Are there any Lincoln University announcements this evening?
She sent me a text message. She had to go to a hospital with a friend, so.
Okay.
That's where she's at now, so.
Okay, well, I hope everything's all right. Item ten, presentations from the gallery. We don't have any signed up, but we do have one for later in the meeting. Are there any objections to having the, taking up the, having Diana Buchanan come and speak, which is actually under item sixteen? Any objections? Okay, okay. Seeing no objections, we'll have Diana Buchanan, and so this would be item sixteen, presentations from the gallery on other topics, so you would have three minutes.
Okay, I will make this as quick as possible. I've never been before the council before, so thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Diana Buchanan, and I own a property at one thirty Garfield Street in Jefferson City. Our family has owned the property for over thirty years. We also owned other properties on that street as well. However, we flipped them, remodeled them, and sold them to a Mr. Louis Vedder. My sister lives in the last house on Garfield Street at one thirty in Garfield, and we have been having a lot of issues with excessive gravel being dumped at one twenty-seven Garfield Street, which is directly across the street from my, my home, in which my sister lives in. It's a rental home, but the, our family has owned it for thirty years, and my sister has lived in it the whole time. In 2016, Mr. Vedder came in and put, I didn't know how to do this, so I did this the best I could with the shortest time. So what I did, if I could step in front of this. What he did in 2015, he came in, the city had already said, I wanted that industry, and he even wanted a whole set to be put in, like being in the middle of the street. We changed it for the council, we had council agreements, it was not necessary, so the whole stuff was not needed. So in 2016, my tenant, my sister, was out of town for almost eighteen months, and in that time, I went into the home, paid that, and I did a lot of upgrades in this and that. I was gone for the weekend on, in September, let's just say September. Mr. Vedder had taken in two loads of, of tacked gravel, and decided that he wanted to extend Garfield Street from where the pavement ends all the way to the end of my property. This is like six to eight inches deep. Just lay it down, there was no, you know, gravel, keep it there until it didn't migrate anymore. I came home, I shocked. I came to the city, I spoke to Breck Smith, Danny Abbott, and Mr. Helmut, and I also sent a email to Mr. Pratt. He was my final resort, and I couldn't get the city people to help me. After eight months, I couldn't move out, because I couldn't get tacked gravel to get to the opposite side of my house. So I had to re-wash that instead of molding. After eight months, instead of the city making Mr. Vedder come down and clean up the rest that he had put there, they refused to make, make him do it. They came down and finished through, thank you, and I appreciate that. The city came down and cleaned up every single bit of this gravel. They put in seed, straw, everything, dirt, made, made it beautiful, okay? This is the picture after the grass came in. That's the great job that the city did to clean up this area. I had to take the time to water it, for a while, deter, because they did a good job. Two weeks later, Mr. Vedder came down, brought in another pile of gravel. No, that's what he put in. Then he spread it, as you can see in this picture, and maybe if I get a little closer off to catch it around, you can see this is fresh gravel. You can see where my, I put concrete blocks in to keep the gravel from migrating into my property. Once the city did finish it, I took the extra time to put in concrete blocks to keep any migration from coming in my yard. He was not supposed to put any more gravel in there, because the city, they made hours and tax dollars to do it, to clean it up. When I approached Breck Smith about the situation, asking if he'd come out, it was obvious that you could see this is the gravel. It was obvious that it was in the gravel pile because it was removed. He refused. I'm not agreeing, and he said, I'm sorry, that I didn't have to do that yet. And I said, well, he goes, I think this is a civil matter. Well, it's not a civil matter, because this is the city's driveway, okay? So it's not my rights to take them to court unless the gravel or it's damaging my property. So at that time, I sent a letter to Mr. Pratt on the situation. He did contact Public Works, and I did, I did set up a gaming camera outside, did live ways. Right over here. By the red end, dead in the street sign. I put up a gaming channel, because I had my tenants on the property at that time to watch the lawn. I caught Mr. Vedder and his son Phil on my property, and I, it's clearly stated, no trespassing. Caught him on my property, and I have a disc in there that if you go, won't take the time to look at. They were measuring in my property where the, I don't know what they were doing, but they had trespassing there on my property. And I had asked the police department, just stop them from doing that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I am asking the city council, if there's any way, what do I have to do? The problem is, it's not just the drive way that Mr. Vedder is playing with. It is an entire gravel pit. He has put gravel on the entire yard, everywhere. Is there any way that the city council can stop them from putting dump loads of gravel here that is migrating to my property? You need to put what he wants on it, but put a barrier up.
Ms. Buchanan, here's what we may do. I might connect you with our city administrator, Mr. Kroll, on the best way, maybe on your...
I got just one thing to add, but not just the problem of the blocks, when he puts it in there, he puts it so thick that anybody that pulls down the road and turns around in that big turnaround in there, they spin out, they throw the rocks against my house and my front yard. I have pretty big old glass windows closed in front porch. I have to worry about kicking them out. Not only that, any time it rains, when that rain rushes that gravel all the way down in my driveway, look at the pictures you found there of how bad, how bad gravel is down my driveway showing. It's got it. It is, but it fills up. It fills up my whole driveway.
Okay. Mr. Kroll is going to give you his business card with his contact information. He would probably be the main point person. I know you said you've spoken with some other city staff members up to this point.
Yeah, I'm assuming, we just don't know enough detail, Matt, right now. So let me, let me make sure that we, I'll give you my card, and then we'll make sure that we touch bases, and I'll start following up with them tomorrow and see what we got going on, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Okay, thanks. Item eleven, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, bills introduced, twenty eighteen one oh five.
An ordinance amending section nineteen-nine reimbursement rates and rules of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. Now, this ordinance amends the reimbursement rates for employees when they travel on city business for their daily per diems for meals. The amount would increase from thirty-six dollars a day to fifty dollars a day. This is comparable to what the federal per diem is right now, and it's the first, we haven't updated this in eighteen years, so it's been a while since it's been updated. It is broken down by breakfast, lunch, and dinner also, so if a person has only gone for one or two meals in the day, then they would only get the applicable amount for the, those two meals, or even just one meal, rather than the full amount.
Councilman Graham?
Yes, Miss Strope, but so is this, do we follow federal or do we follow state when it comes to reimbursement rates? Because I know that each state has a different rate per diem, and then you said the federal. I just wonder which one are we following?
Well, this is actually, this won't actually change, so the current standard federal rate is fifty dollars. So we were just matching that amount.
So we've been following the state?
No, we've had just a set rate of thirty-six dollars per day, and we would like to increase that to a set rate of fifty dollars per day, and we chose the fifty dollars per rate, per day, because that is the current standard rate, federal rate.
Is there a state reimbursement rate?
I believe the state, State of Missouri calls for it.
And you can just get that to me?
Yeah, I'd have to get the exact amount.
I'm, I'm sure there's a difference in the rate between the federal and the state. I'm, I'm quite sure of that, so I would like to know the, the difference between the state and the, and the federal reimbursement rate.
Okay, I can get those amounts and some amount to all of you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions of council? Okay, twenty eighteen one oh six.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor. This bill is to use our fund balance to put, put into our budget to start the process at Community Park. One million, six hundred thousand dollars would be to purchase the various park fixtures and equipment needed for that park, eight hundred thousand or so for play features and the safety surface, hundred thousand or so for lighting and furnishings, and five hundred for restroom shelters, et cetera. So this is for us to go ahead and bid that out. The Park Commission did vote unanimously to approve this on their February twelfth meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Graham?
I, I think you may have said it, Mr. Spalding, but does this include a bathroom?
Oh, yes.
Good, because we've been talking about this bathroom for many, 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 many years.
Yes, sir.
So I'm glad to see that this is almost about to come to fruition.
Nineteen eighty-five is what it says.
Eighty-five, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Item thirteen, bills pending, twenty eighteen one oh one.
We took out one oh one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did that already. Yay! All right, one less, twenty eighteen one oh two.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a fifteen-foot roadway easement along the southern side of the five hundred block of Union Street, and vacating a thirty-five-foot roadway easement along the northern side of the five hundred block of Union Street in the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. These, this ordinance, as well as the next one, are both very similar in nature, but they're basically vacating Union Street. Some of Union Street's right-of-way, some of it's easement. So the first one vacates the easements, the number one oh three would vacate the actual right-of-way of Union Street, and that was all a result of our agreement with the school district on road funding near the new school and vacating some of the roadways at some of the other schools. So this is the first step in that agreement.
Great, any questions? Any deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen one oh three.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the five hundred block of Union Street right-of-way.
Mr. Marash, anything to add? Okay, any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal, we have no presentations, nothing else. Any new business or unfinished business? Anything? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone, have a good night. Thank you.